Okay. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission Regular Meeting for Thursday, January 25th, 2024. If we could begin the meeting, stand and pay your respects to the flag.
I move to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we note the role?
Noted, there is a quorum.
Okay. Still no word from Mr. Burrage. Okay, moving along to number five, or I'm sorry, number four, the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented. Uh, if I should, take a second, now we can go down. Do we need to remove nine for the public hearing? It says comment on our point to remove, but do we need formally remove it?
I believe we do.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we do it.
I'll support his motion. To remove, why do I?
I have none.
So I have a motion within a motion to remove public hearing number nine. I have a second. All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, the removal of number nine is approved. So we can go back to the original motion of number four, approval of the agenda, which we have a motion and a second.
We do not have a second at the time.
Oh, we don't?
No, that's why we were able to.
Second.
Okay, so we do have approval, or a motion and an approval. Can all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
And can I get confirmation on whether it was Mr. Turner or Mr. Nold who seconded that motion?
Mr. Turner.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to number five, conflict of interest, ex parte contact. Does anybody have anything they would like to declare or discuss? All right, seeing none, we will move on to number six, approval of the minutes for the Planning Commission Regular Meeting, 11 of January 2024.
I move to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission Regular Meeting from January 11, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Nold. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Number seven, public comment on items not selected for public hearing on this agenda. Does anybody have anything they would like to discuss? Seeing none. We will move on to number eight, Commissioners' comments. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on, number nine was removed. Moving on to number 10, unfinished business. A, we can start with the master plan update.
Good evening Commissioners, Mateo Poslak, McCarly, Our Warman Associates, planning consultant for the township. Hope everyone's doing well. So it's been, it's been a busy couple of months with the master plan. So tonight we've got a good chunk of information for you guys to provide us some feedback on, a little bit of an exercise to go through as it relates to the goals, objectives, and visions. My part, excuse me. In this, I just kind of worked with the Planning Commission on the introduction and the community profile chapter drafts that were provided. We kind of want to get your overall big impression feedback on those two sections. Maybe talk about some items that could be removed, talk about some items that might be missing, or some modification to what's there. And then take a look at the build-out analysis, which provides some interesting insight into all the development talk, you know, we've had as the master plan that the township deals with on a day-to-day basis, and kind of play out some implications that the information might have. And then we also have kind of an updated task memo, as far as the things that we've completed on the master plan, the things that we're working on, and the things that are upcoming, you know, with the goal of staying on schedule of having the plan adopted, you know, by late quarter two, early quarter three.
End of October.
End of, late quarter three, for, for the master plan. So, excuse me, because it died right into, uh, do you have anything?
Maybe go through the memo first about what tasks we've done, what, where we're at, so that everybody knows where we're at to begin to start with.
Yeah, so to provide some context of where we've been, where we are, where we're going, kind of the short end of it for the tasks that we've completed is we've, we held our plan-to-plan meeting. We've done the community profile, the 360 report, the void analysis, we've assembled the steering committee, they're functional. We've discussed the format and the layout, just kind of the presentation of the master plan, and whether or not, you know, that met the needs of the upcoming master plan. We've reviewed some initial maps, there's more map review to be done, but we've taken a look at, at a handful of them. And we have established what the community engagement plan is, and have the framework for that. It's also kind of functioning on its own agenda, or own schedule. The task that are in progress is the master plan survey is still out. The, that's closing mid-February at this point, and I think we're, we're over 500?
We're over, we're around 550 respondents overall. Around, I think it's around 480 is the number of residents who've responded. We've extended to February 15th because our goal is 1,000 residents, and it was evident we were not going to hit that. In talking with staff here at the township, we've done a lot, probably as much as we can to get the word out, short of sending out postcards, because it's been in the Observer twice, it's on social media quite a bit. It's been in, correct me if I'm wrong, Peachtree for the schools, twice. And so, but if you, when you, we look at where spikes and waves have been in terms of that, we're now at a point where participation is going down. So if you have any ideas about how to spike that, get the word out in a more efficient manner, especially to those folks who haven't done, we, we welcome them.
You have a question?
Question, comment. You said social media, is that just the township posting on there?
That's the township posting on there, and we've asked this.
Have you considered paying for advertising until it gets pushed out?
No, we haven't, but that's a good idea.
It's relatively intensive.
It is, yeah.
That would be one of my recommendations to get an ad push.
Thank you. So that's where we are with the survey.
Another task in progress is the like improve missing change exercise that is kind of working in place with the steering committee, and I believe we'll be doing an exercise with the Planning Commission tonight regarding that. In tasks, we've completed the build-out analysis, tonight we're going to talk about it, its implications, and again, working on the background section of the master plan, which includes the intro, the community profile. The upcoming tasks are, the, we're in the process of working with the township to start setting up interviews with focus groups, as well as attending other community organization meetings like the DDA. Upcoming is, we'll kind of start the process tonight, but, but we'll get more deep into it as we go down the road, are the goals, objectives, and strategies for the master plan. It's an important part of the master plan, it's really kind of where you play out your strategy for everything that you've put into this, how are you going to make it work? After that, we're looking at future land use, map, and designations. We're going to design guidelines for the, kind of the physical build of the community. We'll discuss area plans, implementation plans of the goals, objectives, and strategies. And then we're looking to have a draft, or a master, kind of a draft ready for a reveal event sometime in late April or early May, with the hope of getting adoption sometime around October. Just want to make sure I don't miss anything, Megan and I have worked in tandem, but just want to make sure that I'm not overlooking anything. So with that, are there any questions or comments regarding the schedule?
Any questions? I don't see any, so.
Well, with that, we can jump into taking a look at the introduction and community profile sections of the master plan draft that were provided. Again, kind of we'll go intro, we'll go community profile, but the first question is, is, you know, what are your big takeaways from the intro? What are your, what are your impressions of it, from the perspective of the information that's been included in the draft? You know, as it relates to kind of being the first chunk of, of the plan that, that gets read.
How much of this was gleaned from the 2019 master plan?
A lot of it was, I mean, I think a lot of it was from the perspective of the topics covered, the order, things of that nature, a lot of it was left in place with updates. There is some additional information in it, but I think it relies still pretty heavily on the original format, not necessarily format, but order, but the information is updated.
I think we were asked about the order, the like the order at one time. You had another letter out, the 2019 Oxford Township Master Plan, the objectives, were we going to discuss this tonight as well?
Yes, yep.
Then my question is, one of the things that I noticed, or my comment is, is that I noticed in the 19 master plan, there was a lot of feel-good, generic, happy-face comments that had no, really no meat to them, or no definition. And I'd like us to, particularly in this, really this other topic we're going to talk to, is iron some of those out, that we're not using boilerplate generalities and things that we're more specific in what we'd like to see or not see, and maybe with some definitions of, of things that we, that either the Planning Commissioner or the Steering Committee, as a majority rule thinks needs to be defined or outlined a little bit more detail.
Okay. I mean, I know that the introduction is, is a lot of bird's-eye view kind of information that, I think we, with direction, we can make sure it gets hammered out into the nitty-gritty sections of the master plan itself, but, you know, any specific, again, kind of things that you feel are more template, or boilerplate, or, for lack of a better phrase, kind of feel-good introductions into the things that we're going to get into, I mean, that kind of plays into the next question of, you know, what do you, what do you want to keep, what do you want to move, what do you want to add it? So the more specific you have regarding those, where you're finding that information, let us know. And I guess that, John, kind of leads into the next question is, you know, was there anything that you guys saw that was a hard keep, a hard remove, make a tweak?
You know, looking at the 2019 master plan, and getting feedback results about traffic, the 19 plan talked about some roads that could potentially be built for, and they appeared to be kind of ring roads, based on the locations, as I was reading through that in 2019. And I'm not sure if, you know, we're going through all this, talking about future land use, if this draft is going to have that detail maybe expanded on, or if that's been put up, the brakes have been put on that, and it's put aside, and there's no longer consideration for those, those roads?
Traffic, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, I'm just sharing thoughts about it. But they kind of go hand-in-hand, right, how that land gets used around the area, along with how the, where the roads might go, and where they might be built someday.
Yeah, there's a good, there's a good amount of traffic information that's, I think, part of the community profile. It, it doesn't relate so much as it does to maps, and the maps are there from a classification standpoint.
I guess if I'm a citizen, we're going to that open house that was being planned for the, for the, you know, density discussions that we're really getting a lot of feedback from the community on, I, I would want to know, or want more information about what I've already mentioned, where are the homes going to be built, what kind of density are we looking at, and where might these roads go someday?
Yeah, we'll talk about that when we talk about future land use, so that's not this meeting, but that's, we'll start that discussion at the next meeting. And so we'll bring some information, we'll, we'll look at those chapters from 2019, massage them a bit, and bring them back, based on the outline that we did the last time. Our real question right now is, if you looked at the community profile, and the chapter that, that's the introduction, and those were updates of the text that's in the 2019 master plan, what information in there needs to be shared as, in that text of the master plan? Because we talked about the, you know, it's 35 pages, it's a lot for your average person to go through to see the plan, and talked about pairing that community profile down to maybe 10 to 15 pages, but we could make a decision about what those are. We want to hear from you after you read them, what were your big takeaways? What's the story that needs to be told to every person who reads the master plan? There's going to be somebody who, and there's one, somebody in every group who's going to read every single detail, they're going to add up all the, add up all the columns in the table, and make sure they sum correctly at the end, but that's not everybody. And so what are the big takeaways, I think that's, Mateo, that was the intent of your question, of what was presented to you tonight in order to be in that master plan? But it's great that also to have information about what you want to see in the future. So what I'm hearing from you is, one of the things you want to see in the future is that we're still planning for roads, and whether those 2019 plans for ring roads or connector roads can still be in the plan.
Exactly.
Okay.
There's, there's this, an area where you have goals, and then under the goals, you have several objectives, I'm going to call them that, but you have those broken down almost by area.
Yeah.
A lot of detail there, that I, I don't know whether we need to have all of that, or somebody, as an individual wanting to read through it, I'd like to know what the goals are, but I don't know that I need that. And in those particular section, there's one on roads, that talks about 24, and area, various parts.
Right, and.
So what, you know, if I were to ask you, what is the big goal of this plan? Give me one sentence to start from.
So what's the vision? What's the vision of the township?
Right.
So, we have an exercise for you to do with all of those goals and objectives, after we get done with this discussion. So we could just hold those and keep that for later, but if it's the desire of the Planning Commissioners, we're drafting this, to have an overall vision, that you have one statement, what I'd say is, we can start writing that, and start thinking about that tonight, but we're going to do goals and objectives in three stages. Tonight, just editing what you have in 2019 to get your initial take. We'll rewrite those based on your input tonight, come back at your next workshop, which is the fourth meeting, fourth, fourth Thursday of the month, so in February, and then look at it again. And then that would be, these are goals and objectives that we could take to the community, because we're going to have a open house on March 10th. And then in April, you'll have community feedback on those goals and objectives, and then you could probably, I think that I would be responsible to look at finalizing those. So, and, so we'll add to the notes and ask people, I'll, I'll put something out there where people can help, we can help write a vision tonight, or at least start thinking about that, or brainstorming about that. But again, going back to the draft that we sent you, and I'm now going to go down and make everybody say something, no offense, Mr. Bailey, but that's okay.
That's fine.
Looking at that, or looking at the data that we've given you before, in terms of telling the story to the public, to somebody who's new to the master plan, what out of this demographic data are your key takeaways that you feel like should be shared?
Go left, right, left.
The demographic.
John's got his hand up.
We'll, we'll go this way.
My vote ran aground on page two, previous plans and studies, the bottom part of that. I'm going to read a little bit. Oxford Township adopted the previous master plan on September 12th, 2019. This document represents an update of the most recent plan. In addition, the township previously adopted several sub-area plans and other various plans and studies. Each of these studies were evaluated and referenced where appropriate in this master plan update. The studies include, and when I went through these, I appreciate the New Parks and Recs 2020 master plan, we had the 360 program that you talked about, the void analysis, the community profile, but as we get farther down, Senatoria Sewer Master Plan 1999, if we're in the water system 1998, and the construction, that's state-driven, M24 corridor incorporated into the master plan in 1995, and the central sub-area plan, September 15th, 1994, I don't know what some of those are, they're wonderful words, but I don't know what some of those are, but if we're using that, referencing that, we've done some changes, one or two changes, I'm being silly. We've done a lot of changes since then, is that being rolled into this, and are we telling the, the general population that we've not only included this old information, but we've gone to the Water Sewer Committee and understood what they're doing today? That's a big one in the township, because I sit on that committee, and that is very encompassing. So that's, that's my concern, that all the data is really good, but what, whose data is it? Is it 1999, 1994, or is it today's data that we have researched and scoured the different committees and gleaned that out of?
So some of that list was cut from the previous draft, and if we're updating it, we haven't gone to the Water Sewer Committee, but we've been working with Sharp Engineering, we can adjust those accordingly, and probably anything that is before 2015 should probably be taken off that list.
If I may, because that was my, going to be more of my points, is that some of the stuff is so old, I don't know how much value there is in it, based on what Mr. Nold said, is that things have changed so much in some of these areas, that I'm not sure how valuable that data is anymore. Should those also be evaluated, maybe at the top of for the country, or some of those areas may need to be redone also, outside of the master plan?
Okay.
So maybe, I mean, maybe just take the date off, say, as amended, or based on latest data, or something, versus the date, because that stood out to me like, sort of on 1994, I'm like, that's over 30, almost 30.
That's over adjusted.
Not quite 30, but it's close, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. Other things. Again, looking at this demographic data, looking at the different things that were presented to you, what are the, what are the main takeaways that popped out to you? And I'll share one for me, is when, looking at the changes in land use, it really stood out to me that you've had 0% growth in industrial in a significant period of time. And so I feel like that is a data point that needs to be emphasized in that story told.
I guess we could talk about that a little bit more, because if you look at industry in the, not just in Oxford, around the state of Michigan, around the country, you know, industry, has there been a generic growth in industry, or has it mostly been offshore? Because you get probably a little both, right? So if we stay, if we stay flat, is it, are we going to be good? Because most of the small towns, you go up into the thumb, they've been wiped out because all their industries left.
So.
So it's something that needs more discussion on how we word that, if we're going to put something like that in our master plan? Or what is the strategy?
Is the starting point, the 2019 master plan, is, is where you started with that analysis? Is it a flat growth?
So there's a, there's a chart where we've used data from Oakland County, and you can see it across a good period of time, where things have grown and where they, where they've not. And I think to Mr. Spitz's point, comparative data to maybe the county overall, and the state overall is worthwhile, to see whether those are growing, because there is lots of data to say that industrial jobs or blue-collar jobs have not been growing. But, and then who do you want to attract, and what land do you have? Those are like the next questions leading off of those.
Yeah, how deep do you want to get into that?
Well.
Area, because industry is a pretty big, broad term, right?
Right, and I think when we get to.
Are you getting into the auto industry that is moving out, there's other industries you're never going to get into, or tech type of stuff?
And I think when you get into the future land use, that's where you really flesh those out. But looking right now at how your land uses have changed, to me, there's a story there. There's a story in that you have, residential is always growing, but.
My question still begs to be asked, is this taken from Oakland County statistics, or is this taken from a baseline of our 2019 master plan in Oxford Township and forward?
It's taken from Oakland County statistics that were in the 2019 master plan, and also that have been updated based on the same data set. So we don't have, we don't have, we don't have a driven, sometimes for an existing land use city, you go out and drive it all. And I think, remember when we had maps, we gave you an existing land use, and we looked at it, and you said, you know, this might change, or this might be different, what we did is, that's that Oakland County set of geog, of land uses, and that's what we used. And so previously in that 2019, you didn't do an existing land use survey, what you had done is used again the same Oakland County data that they published.
Where is page five?
I think it's up from there, yeah, it's up from there. I'll definitely have to log in.
So from my simple mindset, flipping the chart, Oakland County, we used Oakland County's data for 2019. And we're using the same data, and that's how we had the flatness in our growth.
Yeah.
So is this the chart you're referencing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you go based on this chart, John, if you look at the acreage usage, which is how they're calculating it, goes back to 1998. Okay.
But the source of it, and who's gathering it, is Oakland County.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Sorry. So, again, so we're going to, so. Mr. Nold?
Let others talk.
Okay, Mr. Ballard?
Well, I mean, there's, so there was a few things, so I, I don't have a whole lot of comments where they had to, my thing was first of, is kind of reading and, reading and reviewing the 2019 master plan, because getting familiar with that specifically, and to understand what the goals were back then, the objectives, and then kind of taking a look at what information you put in there, and understanding some of these metrics that are in here, and understanding where some of this stuff is coming from. So as of right this second, I don't have a whole, I'm more listening to right this second, to get understanding, so I can, so that I can ask better questions as it comes up. So I don't have a whole lot of comments right this minute.
Mr. Spitz?
Just a couple small ones at this point, and I'll probably continue to comment as we go through this process, but just like if you look at page, like page 13, you know, it's, you have figure two, and then you have table six, do I need both? There's similar type of data, you know, age groups is by area, one's a little more specific, probably Oxford, and those, they're surrounding areas, but can you combine them to kind of limit things? I need to, I like to keep in mind, as, as individuals and a community that's going to be looking at this, aren't going to be as ingrained in some of these things as we all are, because we're going through this, or you need to make some of the data so it's, it's built to be straightforward and to the point, versus getting too much into the weeds, because a lot of people don't understand. You might get people like me on a few occasions that dig into it, but in most cases, people are just looking at, okay, look at this nice, you know, bar chart, that's, that's fine, or we go to numbers, but if you're trying to do a comparison, bar charts, that's right.
Right.
So just, there's a couple places like that through here, that we might be able to combine, a couple graphs to limit the size of it a little bit more.
I guess, maybe come back to it, because one of the questions that I keep looking, I look at the map, and I continue kind of looking at the map, and I look at, and I, I know this point not before this period of time, but, and then I'm looking at all the potential vacant land that can be turned into housing. It sounds like housing's one of our, our largest growing sections. And, and I look again, and I look at our map, and we have one corridor that comes through, that's 24. That's really the only highway that we have, I know we talked about maybe some ancillary stuff around, but there's 24 that runs through that, and I already know that myself, just driving down 24 to come, just go through Lake Orion, is crazy right now as it is. And with all the potential land that's going to be coming available to turn into potential housing, or even higher density is, what we're, you know, some, some of these things that I'm hearing, is how the heck is even that one main artery that we're going to have, going to accommodate the future of where we're heading? that we're gonna have gonna accommodate the future of where we're heading? That's like, that's, I keep continuously looking at it. I don't know how to, I don't know how it's gonna be addressed.
And so I think that's a story that we can tell also in this section. Is that if you look at the traffic data, there's a lot of traffic data and there's also a lot of traffic data about crashes. Most of them are on M24. That's your highest, but you also don't have a high volume east-west road. So your connections across are lacking and then the ring, the ring road. And that's the reason in the 2019 plan and then previous plans, there had always been plans for those connections across. You can tell the story here, what I'm hearing from you is that it's important to tell that transportation story very clearly that no matter what develops, you already have a transportation system that's under stress because you only have one main artery of Lapeer Road, north-south. And you don't have a lot of other methods to alleviate traffic off of that.
Have we had conversations with the road commission on some of this stuff? Do we bring them into part of these discussions?
We will be interviewing them and so these are things that we can bring up.
I'm sure most of the community, they're number one concern for bribery roads, traffic. Mr. Olbrecht wasn't here about the public, you know, reading the public that was flushed. His main question was traffic, right? How is that road gonna be managed? Is it gonna expand? What are we doing? With all the developments that we are considering, people tend to question, what are we doing about roads? And that's where the road commission is gonna come in because they know funding is only so much. We can plan for anything we want. That doesn't mean the road commission is going to agree. Because unfortunately, the township doesn't own the roads. The road commission owns the roads for the most part, other than, even some, no subdivision. So that becomes a sticking point. So road funding is definitely gonna be a concern going forward because of this data.
All right. Anything else to share, Mr. Spitz?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Kind of, he stole a little bit of my thunder because that was one of my questions is roads. What other arteries are we looking at? You know, if we show the future that five years from now, 10 years from now, we want stuff, you know, over by Oxford Road or Barber Road. Are we gonna make that a possible artery to alleviate some of that traffic and things like that? You know, is that in the future or is everything gonna be heavily, you know, down the main road? But I think the big thing for me is painting the picture of how Oxford has changed. You know, yeah, we're, we might be losing industrial, but what are we gaining? What, how are we changing with the times? And how are we gonna prepare for even more changes five years from now?
Mr. Turner?
Well, I talked about a couple of things. And then a minor thing in the area where you talked about paths and trails and things. You talk about motorized vehicles, non-motorized vehicles. What about things like horses and things that way? Are they gonna be permitted or not? Maybe that's a minor point, but.
Okay. Yep. So some communities have plans for horse paths, like Highland Township.
Well, yeah.
Does.
Upon the trail in certain areas.
I know there's a document, the township will put a horse path up to that area. Grant funding, of course, is the issue, but always, money's always the issue.
Mr. Wilson. Oh, first of all, was that everything, Mr. Turner?
Yeah, for now, I got tired of reading.
It's a lot.
Oh, if you had a specific question, like for us to maybe be prepared. I would, if with that question in mind, I would have read through this thinking about what your question was going to be and maybe been able to address maybe a little bit better what you're looking for right now and the feedbacks. I did, I wasn't sure, was that asked and I missed it somewhere?
I think it was in the cover memo, it might have been on the second page to that.
Okay, my apologies if I missed it.
We'll put those discussion questions up front though.
But as I was reading through it, I wasn't really being critical of the data as I was reading through it. A few things popped out, you know, the industrial comment. As we're getting feedback from the master plan, you know, do we, is that what the community wants tied to our vision? Do we want more industrial? I guess that's yet to be determined, right? I, the community is speaking and it seems like their focus, the feedback we're getting. And I think that feedback that we're seeing in the, in our steering committee meetings. You know, we may have some, a little bit of an advantage there to some, for some of the others that aren't seeing that data because we're seeing the comments come back and it's really heavily weighted towards lower density developments, right? And the traffic are the two things that keep on popping up in those, those survey results that we have to date. So, you know, if maybe that information could be shared with the entire committee. It would help us, you know, on the objectives and goals and steer our thoughts so we're aligned with the rest of our community, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I did not want to publish the results while it was open. And anything that's in your packet is a public document. That's the reason for it not being, I think that's a great point for context and guiding where your decisions are.
Okay, and I'm learning, so I'm trying to, you know, make sure I'm not out of line here. But it seems to make sense to get that data to the commission sooner so that it helps us stay aligned with where the community's thoughts are. But the one thing that, one thing that stuck out in there was the 3,000 homes or nearly 3,000 homes, I think you mentioned in there that could be built, right? That.
Yeah.
That, I think that you made that comment during some of our steering committee meetings that is that really, you know, how dense is that? And are we gonna help try to steer that with a rewrite of the master plan so that maybe it's not 3,000? Maybe it's 2,000 or 1,500? I don't know what the number is and what kind of control we would have.
If you want my opinion, the answer is yes to that question, but I'm more invested on this.
But there's context to that, like the build out analysis is the numbers that that generates uses your current zoning in place.
Right.
So it takes a little bit of zoning, AGSF, R1 and says, okay, if you're using your setbacks and your lot size requirements, what could you just put on this spot? So even with your residential zoning mechanisms now being relatively low density, the majority of them, you still get your 3,000 units. 3,000 units is 6,000 people. 6,000 people is twice what SenCog had you at 2050 and we're betting you'll probably be there before 2050. And that, I think the, the impact of that information based on the things that you guys have been talking about tonight is traffic planning, it is utility planning, it is, you know, residential is, you know, residential is gonna come. Right, you guys aren't gonna have to bend over backwards to try to accommodate that. It's going to come and you may be in a reactionary position or you might be in a proactive position. But even as it relates to the industrial conversation about, well, what, what other things do you want? Right, residential, you don't have to say we want that, you'll get it. It's, it's in what form are you looking to get it? In what form are you looking to have the zoning address it? But when it comes to like the utility planning, you know, that we've discussed as far as extending utilities up 24 and is there the opportunity to push for more of a diverse tax base land use that doesn't have you guys so heavily weighted in residential? Doesn't push your population to that additional 6,000 people that could happen? But also maybe starts to generate some more in-home employment opportunities. You know, one of the reasons I feel, or at least we've observed, is one of the reasons your traffic is so bad is because nobody works here. I mean, people work here, but the majority of your employer and, you know, the people who are commuting to other communities, that's on 24, I reverse commute it two days a week. And I just, you know, I just smile because I'm like, oh, I'm glad I'm not that guy coming up this way to home. I'm on the other way. But so that's, that's really where the build out analysis offers you that picture of with the tools that you have today, this is where you will head. And you kind of at a crossroads to decide, okay, are we just gonna focus on the residential element? Is there an opportunity to bring other things in here? Because the utilities will, will garner other types of development if you are looking for them. Because the residential, like I said, you're not gonna have to try, you're just gonna have to decide how.
When you put 6,000 or whatever number of people in, you need support systems for them. And as I look through this, and this one is sort of a hot button with me, but it's hospitals, it's medical. There's nothing that we've started so far that covers any of that.
And that's, that's exactly, that's perfect. That's the whole reason we're having this conversation now.
I mean, you know, the nearest hospital is Pontiac or Lapeer. If you're a heart patient, you might not get there. More emergency facilities besides McLaren, nothing wrong with them, but. Libraries, you know, do we need to build a couple more libraries?
So that's a great point and that services come along with that and also demand for retail and whatnot. And then that also, some of the reason you haven't seen some growth, Mr. Ballard, it's in your hands, so you're next.
Well, I'm just, I'm just. Well, it kind of sparks, go ahead, go ahead.
Is that if, in your industrial and commercial districts right now, most of them, you extended water up 24 north of the village. But those where that, that isn't going to be extended, every single one of those parcels, their development is constrained. Because they not only have to, like any other, deal with their stormwater, they also have to have a septic system. And so that septic system, then the larger you get in terms of the development, the larger the field is, the more constrained it gets. And also there are certain industries which will not go where they don't have clean water and at a guaranteed pressure. Sometimes this has to do with medical facilities because they need certain things for their labs. Also, if you're looking for anything research and development, they, they want clean water. Also, if you are looking to attract anything like a brew house or whatnot, a brewery or a large scale where they need water without having that municipal water, that's a constraint. But that septic system, and we'll do some graphics for this for the open house to show, that actually constrains the development of those parcels. So it might be a 10 acre parcel, but really you're only gonna be able to use three of it for your actual facility between your parking, your stormwater and your septic. So, so Mr. Ballard.
Yeah, who's next?
Well, I don't know, it just, it kind of, well, I'm kind of all over the map now thinking about a lot of these things. Because, because you kind of, I think about it as, right, residential at first. Just kind of like thinking about a master plan, you kind of think about residential. But then you also kind of spark the idea of jobs. It's like, I know that being in an industrial space and having industrial warehouses myself, the importance of that there is a need for warehousing and there is in manufacturing. And warehousing in industrial just isn't manufacturing, it's, it's distribution. It's all types of uses for industrial property. And I, I know just in our area and what we have available, there's not a whole lot of options that we have here in Oxford. I know, I know the village is 100% occupied. And even over on what was Excelsior, there's only a couple of lots that are there. You have to build something, but other than that, there's not, it doesn't appear to be a whole lot of options for growth. Correct? Yep. And I know that it's limited or constraints are based on water and sewer to make that happen as well. So it's, if, you know, kind of think about if you're commuting, you also have to have jobs here as well. And to try to attract, attract the, but also my other comment was is that just because there's a demand for housing doesn't mean that we have to go down the, down the avenue of higher density or medium density. We can still keep that country feel or that, that country aspect that we have of these larger lots with lower density. Other, other, other places in other communities have done that as well and have prospered very, very well with it. So just because there's a demand to come here and people want to put in or developers want to put in hundreds and hundreds of houses on these lots, doesn't mean we have to kind of head in that direction if the community doesn't want that.
That's correct, and that's the reason why it needs to be strongly worded in your master plan. Okay, so Mr. Noel and then Mr. Bailey.
Go ahead.
I have three or four or five things. A lot of these to clarify. The 2019 master plan talks about roads. There is a part in it that talks about roads expansion. Selected areas that they looked at or they identified, we need to work off that work that's been done by our forefathers. The build out plan, is that we all talk about residential? Are we talking about industrial for the build out plan as well?
No, we were just asked to do residential.
That's fine. Industrial versus residential has changed in my thought process. I've had a meeting with the supervisor, Jack Curtis, and I talked across the table this morning. And he brought up, and I'm not gonna do this justice, but I'm gonna do my very best. A diverse tax base here. Right now, we have, from what you've told us tonight, we have a tremendous tax base of residential. That all comes with the infrastructure that Mr. Turner talked about. Not solely linked to that, but very strongly linked to that residential. That's our, you know, our, from shopping to, to, to other things in the community of the infrastructure. But if we had a stronger industrial base of north of town, that would bring in tax dollars that wouldn't be directly tied to the things of, of infrastructure that are tied to homes. So that's a point that I want to bring out and that, that really stuck with me today because I never discussed it. It was just, we're always talking about density. In building on that, we are, we are working on a sewer line going all the way up to Dunlap Road-ish. And then it's already talked about, when that was already being developed, the folks north of that are saying run that sewer and possibly water all the way up to Oakwood Road. So that is the next thing that the Water Sewer, the Water Sewer Committee is, we haven't started looking at with rolled up shirts sleeves yet, but it is on our job to do because we gotta get the first one done before we get the second one. That would bring me to talk about Bearing Cast has come in a couple of times to the township. They're out north of town in Oakwood. They are, they are wanting to expand their business, build a new facility. They want to add about 50 jobs, this is very skilled jobs, clean room environments with CNC machinery. So we do have industry looking about coming out here. Oh, by the way, they want a tax abatement, which is, which is fine, but that's why we're finding out about this. But we do have industry wanting to come here. They have an opportunity, this is just for our example tonight, they have an opportunity going to another state because another state is willing them. We'd like to have it here in Oxford. So the more we try to do, build our industrial area is gonna attract, has a potential attracting more industry or the expansion of that industry, which will relieve a lot of the burdens and hidden costs, as I call it, to the residential. And I think I covered all my, my.
And I know this is something we'll discuss later, but that's where I think we do need to do it right, but to relook at the economic development committee that can be talking to some of those businesses, but that's another discussion. One of the, one of the things that, that stuck out to me is, you know, we talked about industrial, we talked about all the businesses, but unless I'm wrong, we're trying to find businesses that can be put into buildings we already have or areas we already have. What about businesses that wouldn't come look at us? I mean, if we're looking at 3,000 homes, we've got the area, and I do, and just throwing out an idea, a trust and panel plan would be ideal in this area. But in our area, you couldn't get wide loads through there, you couldn't get excess semis through there, you couldn't. So are we set up to entice any other businesses? Or are we only enticing businesses like what was already there? And then are we really looking into the future or are we looking to redo what we had in the past?
I mean, I think as far as being set up for certain things, I feel like what, it's kind of a tale of two roads. It's M24 south of the village and M24 north of it. I think M24, you're looking to try to fit into what is there. I think north of 24 is a different story. I think north of 24 with certain types of.
I think north of 24 with certain types of...
Or even east, if, you know, coming up, before you even get into Oxford, if we had another artery where you could go up via Oxford Road, or even a Barbara Road, and, you know, again, just throwing out generalities. But to have a truck that could come in, or businesses that get numerous trucks a day, they're not going to look at us, because to turn down Drainer, to turn up Oxford Road, they'll look elsewhere.
Well, I think, I think your trucks are 24, headed either north to 69 or south to 75. So that's, I'm just saying, like, from, are you talking about local district?
But to get them off of 24 to local businesses is difficult, which would prohibit businesses from coming here.
Yes, so your infrastructure, a business right now, they look at your infrastructure, and they look to see, you know, is the parcel big enough? And does it have the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, and the roads that I, that I need? And their trucks are, are part of that, in terms of term radii and things like that, and getting there. If you want, your choice right here is to chicken or egg. If you want to attract, if you want to go beyond from what you're, go beyond what your infrastructure is built for and what you're getting right now, you may need to plan for some infrastructure changes, and know that some of those are out of your hands. Because it's either the state or the county who controls your roads. You, as the municipality, can pass a road millage, you can bring some of your own funds, and entice the, either of those to be a partner with you, or look for grants. And sometimes there's also grants associated with the, the road improvements associated with a specific business coming in. You have that in your master plan, you know how to do that. But also, that, having economic development staff, or somebody at the county who's working with you, or a committee who's focused on it, you need somebody to put... If you, if you want to upgrade that infrastructure, you're going to need to put energy towards that. So, if that's what you want to do, then you put that into the master plan so that it's there as a marker for when the township budget, when people are looking at grants, when the road commission looks at what you want to do, when MDOT looks at what you want to do. So that's, if you want to do that, now's the time to start talking about and writing it into the master plan. So keep those thought processes going. And you can dream big, you can dream really big in a master plan. You want it to be able to be achievable, but it doesn't need to be intensely practical. You know, a lot of times in master plans will have two or three big hairy audacious goals. But then, your, your leadership has to say, we will commit resources to it. So that, so, you know, these are, these are all good thoughts, but you, and kind of my, our answer is, yeah, you can do it, but then you need to write it a different way. So you can't keep doing what you've, what you've done in the past two or three iterations of the master plan. Mr. Wilson?
I'm not sure if I was extra or not, but the last thing I just wanted to add was the traffic numbers, and because you were asking, sorry, you were asking questions specific about the data, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And the data for traffic, it averages out daily average trips, which is, I think, a little deceiving. It doesn't tell us peak, which, that seems like that's pretty important right now. Because that's the thing we're all, I think we're all talking about is, Monday through Friday, at 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, on 24 northbound, and then southbound in the morning. I don't experience that, I've experienced the northbound during the evening, but not, I get up pretty early in the morning, so it doesn't bother me, but...
So we can get peak data.
That data, having it in here, I think is really important. What's in here right now is kind of watered down, seeing 9,000 trips on pure road, average daily trips. When I think of it, it's 35,000 is what I saw. We talked about the steering committee a while ago, is a peak.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm going to add the two sections of build-out.
Did you, anybody have any questions about the build-out analysis, and how that was done, what the, what that data is?
I guess, there's one other thing I would add during the conversation. The only thing I would add is, when the comment about tax base came up, is from a diversification standpoint, and it got me to thinking about another community that I work with, which is Wicksum. And so Wicksum is, is 50% zoned industrial, is the next 40% is residential, split 50-50 between owner occupied and rental, and then the 10% is retail, off the order maybe. But just literally in a conversation a few days having with their city manager, they were talking about that the diversification in their tax base is a very good buffer for them when it comes to different types of recessions. And not that you could ever set yourself on the goal of diversifying to the extent that they have, a lot of that came from old industrial with the Ford plant, things of that nature. They didn't, they, they got hit, just like everybody else did in Oates, because even though they were 50% industrial, it was all auto-associated, it was all Ford, and they took their hit. But since that time, that land has been, has been diversified from an industrial standpoint, of all the different things industry can be now. And there's a very comfortable sentiment in City Hall that, you know, if there is a residential pop or things of that nature, that the city will, will weather that storm much better. Just seeding it from the perspective, I think another thing to look at when you talk about the residential diversification, it doesn't just play into traffic, and it doesn't just play into how much residential density you want here, but from the perspective of your tax base, and was collectible in good times and was collectible in bad times, just a consideration.
That's a very good point, which leads me back to the question. We do, we did a build-out for residential, and where I'm going is a build-out for industrial. Is that feasible, Megan? Will you roll your eyes?
It's, it's not feasible in the same way for residential. Because residential, it's very clear how, it's very clear how it's divided. Usually it's as much density as possible, so you use the minimum lot size and go from there. You wouldn't necessarily use the, I haven't, in my 20-year career, I haven't seen an industrial build-out. What I have seen is, and we could do this later on, is if you change, with design guidelines or design requirements, is if you change scenarios, you can see whether you can bet a 20,000 square foot building, or 200,000 square foot building, one-story, two-story, compute those, compute some of those things out and go from there. I, I wouldn't say to, if you wanted that type of analysis, I would do it once you had a future land use, to see scenario, to see what you're, what you're getting, and looking at that. And a lot of it has to deal with setbacks, design, and also, each user's going to be different. So, you know, a 200,000 square foot warehouse has a lot different jobs and impacts than a 200,000 square foot office, and how it interacts and whatnot. So they're, they're not apples to apples. It's not as easy as looking at a 10-acre, 10-acre zoning versus, you know, zoning where the maximum lot size is 125,000 square feet, whatnot. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So I feel like we, I feel like we have good direction to go forward, to rewrite the community profile, and also the, tighten up the introductory chapter. What I think is the best thing to do now is to move to those goals and objectives, because we've, we've been talking about a lot of things, both on the ground right now, but also when you're looking out in the future what you want. Back on this table here, we could take the next 10 to 15 minutes, and everybody needs a pen. I have pens if you don't have one. On big pieces of paper are printed out the goals and objectives that you had in that memo. And we ask you to think about what you liked about it, what, what you would change and whatnot. We're asking you to do a group edit. So if you could look at these big pieces of paper, and anything that you feel like should be kept for goals and objectives, put a check over it. Anything that you feel like, or a check beside it. Anything that you feel like, this doesn't belong anymore, we should delete this, cross it out. And we don't need group consensus on this right now, we just need you to put down your individual thoughts. If there are things that you feel like should be added, write it down. And all six of you will do it, and then we'll come back as a group after you all do it, and we can see where there's consensus in terms of, in terms of what people think should go or stay or be changed. And what we'll do as your consultants is then take that back, rewrite them, and bring them back for the next time. Does that exercise make sense?
Yeah.
All right, hope we could take the next 10 to 15 minutes to do that.
Sure.
I was hoping we get to color or something.
A red pen.
A red pen.
Actually, if you need to take it back, we can.
I actually just want to adjust something, but you're fine.
Oh, I thought you just knocked that over. Oh, please.
I read my glasses, good.
Oh, you made it big enough, we can read it, thank you.
And I double-spaced it, so there's lots of space in two lines.
Something's missing.
Wherever you want. Yeah, write the next one, there's no wrong answers here, so...
Where's the first one, Megan?
Um... I don't know that I cleaned down.
Right here, got it.
New character, and those are two boards.
Question. If you want a definition.
Just circle it and say I'd like a definition. You don't have a pen, I got it.
I don't, I think it's only... Put in some fields and land. Just my personal opinion.
Megan, do you? Do we have an indicator of how many commissioners think that this is not? Like, do we want to have them initial if they...
If, if you agree... No, just cross it out. If you agree with him crossing it out, cross it out as well.
Can I cross out just portions of things?
What?
Portages, portions of the state?
Yeah, yeah.
So a question for you, I just need some feedback for this industrial land use. So if, like, there's a mention anything about safe traffic? If industrial brings a very high level of traffic, should we add something to that to control traffic?
There you go.
Control traffic?
Yeah, you can put neutral traffic or industrial land uses should only be placed on roads that have the capacity to, for, for the traffic for those uses.
I just want traffic considerations.
Okay. Oh, here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just going to cross it out. I think that's what I believe in. Oh, you can do that and do that. Someone's got to pick it up. He's a French guy, that's all.
Well, so you might have some brownfields where there's already been pollution.
Excuse me, do you have brownfields?
I'm sure you do. Which I know you do probably, what is it, Seer Point? So that is one of the cross-street percent, there's some lots over there.
It doesn't take much nowadays to be a brownfield. Yeah, okay. Was there a bet on it? Yeah, it's a brownfield.
Yeah, so you can just write, you need to compose a statement. That doesn't need to be an objective.
Right.
So in this case, we provided safe and comfortable routes for walking, bicycling, public transportation. Are we talking sidewalks?
It could be sidewalks, it could be safety paths, it could be the Palmyra Trail, it could be horse trails, it could be... It could be a bike thing. Those are controversial.
I think we should turn just all golf carts. So, can we just turn into a golf cart mirror? Just make everything 25 miles an hour?
That's what, that came up in my, there was a very serious point in conversation in White House regarding 59, was golf carts. Was trying to provide some sort of, like, safety pad system for golf carts.
Yeah. Those resorts, they're all over, water zone. And it's like, you look out, you see a golf cart with six and seven kids that are under 10 years old on the same driving. And you know, of course, they all think they're a dude.
I don't think it's a resort anymore. And you see, this going on, and they'll come driving right by.
This number four is a man.
Take it in pound.
Well, actually, those really were two resorts, I don't kind of, for me, tight tense of the vision of what Oxford is. You know, as we're talking about this whole thing. And whether it's those words or different words, or, you know, some other... But it seems like once we latch on to, okay, what is the vision? Everything else will follow with that. I don't actually, I don't like that. I can see, you see this change over the years. Because I feel like I'm on vacation, like, not to steal from my Korean, but, you know, it's one of the reasons I'm a bit like, because I feel like... Oh, because you've got lots of space around me, there's one nearby, there's, you know, golf in the area, it's got so many things like that to offer.
Can I double? Can I put a check and cross something on the same line?
Absolutely, yeah.
Just, just looking to make it a long Friday, aren't you, Mike?
Yeah.
You can sit here and disseminate all of these, all these poster boards.
Well, that's why we're doing it three times, is that we'll rewrite these, we won't get it right, you'll get more things from the community, then they'll look at it again. These are like the DC statuses of the plan, and so these are the things you're operating under now, and if they're not running true, or they are, or they need a little tweak, then it's good. And that can strip down as well, you could have some general principles that address everything.
There's some language like this in the seventeen ninety nine master plan existing, that talks about surrounding areas, but the words are different. You know, maybe pulse of that stuff from, and those words were also used when we were fighting that development in Waterstone.
Those are very specific.
They were, it was, it was about the surrounding, that the homes being built will be similar to ones that are already in that area. And I can't remember the exact words, but.
Right, and I think those are in the future land use categories.
That's what I agree, that's what Water, developments like Waterstone are big things. Waterstone is supposed to be a community itself, right? And they wanted to build more of it, so they basically can't, not for good, that's what they're now. Cause looks the community down in Torre, on Southern Orlando?
Villages.
Villages.
Oh, no, 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 the one that's right by Disney, that's in the orbit of this one, that's, um, The Truman Show was filmed there.
Yeah.
Right, Celebration.
Celebration, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's not that good.
Right, and then Cherry Hill Village is based on the same principles. And so it's, it's that you have smaller, smaller lots, but they're clustered around parks. So that your open spaces in your yards is parks, and you look at, if you've ever been to Washington DC, where they hold, in their neighborhoods, they'll have a lot of attached single family, um, they're usually bringing you a park. There's a park within a ten minute walk of every one of those. So. But yeah, early aughts, late nineties, there were a lot of master plan communities that used those, but those were also looking at, you know, you think about Waterstone, how many acres is that?
Few.
Few, yeah, like a couple hundred. So.
But Waterstone is a reclamation project.
Right, but you may have more of those.
Yeah, which is, that's a good example.
And you can set the tone of the master plan for what you want, because your master plan is also a communication tool to developers.
Waterstone, if they share the east-west traffic.
And they were supposed to connect a road over there.
They were forced to have it.
That's, that's in the two nineteen master plan, if y'all want to go back. We've got our four five.
Someone went to school about that piece of property, where is he?
I mean, I don't school anymore.
I don't talk anymore, but they blocked that road from going through there, cause that development was all the way through, connected those.
Which one's in?
Marketplace was in.
Marketplace drives, which is all the way over to Oxford.
Yes.
The original plan was when they put that development in there with the condos and apartments, that was supposed to be phase four, I think?
Yeah.
But then they sold that, they split that piece of property off and sold schools in the schools, and it was like, they don't know.
Now that the school's got so well balanced, maybe it'll happen.
And there's no plan for that. I mean, they don't have the money to develop it, they're just gonna sit on it.
You gotta get it on.
We're a little off. I never even had a chance to look at every board.
Yes.
Yeah, close it. We're gonna have to go through it one more time.
Well, yeah, so when we go sit down, we'll, we can, somewhere good. I'm, I'm gonna let Mateo do this, while you sit down, we got one more exercise to do before we let you go tonight.
From where the ball? You've got all your commercial area up there, trucks.
Oh, yeah, spell that out, you make it, yeah.
Alright. Alright, just for the folks at home, we're coming back, there was a group edit of the vision goals, of the goals and objectives, uh, at the next, um, at the next planning commission meeting, but the fourth Thursday in February, um, we'll bring those back and we'll talk about them, um, more. At this point in time, though, what we wanted to do with the planning commission is give you an opportunity to do what we do with the steering committee, what steering committee members are doing, um, with small groups on their own. Um, we're gonna just very quickly ask you what you like about Oxford Township. It'd be sticky notes, so if you were at the plan to plan, you will already know one idea per sticky note. Um, what you like about the township, what you think could be improved, um, what to change and what's missing. So I'm going to do each subject area one at a time, so I'm gonna give you green sticky notes for what you like. Um, and I'm gonna give everybody at least two, if you want more, do that.
One answer per sticky note?
One answer per sticky note, yes. Um, and what we'll do is after everybody has, all these exercises have been done, and we might do this also at the community open house, is then we can bring all those together and work down to also, um, working with other communities when we've done this, when you look at those, it's very helpful to get that overall vision, because you know what, you hear what people like about the township, what they want to improve, what they think should change and what's missing, and if you ask those four questions, you're gonna hit everything. But we wanted to do that with you as well, so. Please, two? Two.
This is just what we like.
What you would like. And if you want more sticky notes, I will leave them up here, uh, with your chair, Mr. Bailey.
Oh, one or two?
Two, I'm giving you the two, you can fill out how many, however many you want, I'm fine with you. It would be nice if everybody would fill out at least one.
I'm not looking, I can't even see that far, don't worry.
I'm good, I'm going down. Is it good?
There's so many wonderful things, let's take another one.
Yeah, go for it. Just one.
Jack, take care of the chair.
Just let me know if you got more.
Mr. Nold and Mr. Will's likely to go twice, they've already done this once.
But you have to do different answers.
They did it in November, so it might, it's probably not.
You might have to change the button.
Alright. It is. So the next thing is improve.
Oh, improve, can I get a new statement?
This is improve.
The blue is for improve.
Oh.
So that, that's fine.
Improve?
We'll keep that.
Put that in prove bucket.
Yeah. So what would you like to improve? You want another green one? Okay, sure. There you go.
So.
Uh-oh, so we have only two more?
Yes.
Alright, so now yellow is what is change. So something that you would whole scale change, not just a little tweak, like and improve, but what do you need to change? Okay. It could be anything.
This selection, you have that.
DC chair.
Alright, so, Mr. Wolf, I was really in the changer.
You wanna keep them color coordinated?
Yeah, it is helpful, it is helpful when we are processing them.
This is, maybe it was no object, right?
And for folks at home, if they would like to do this, it is available at Township Hall. I'm in, anytime.
No, no, I, I get.
Share what you think.
Can you put your name on it? Ask somebody two, and some. You can do it, Mike.
I know, I have a bigger vision of this, which we never had.
They will. Okay.
Is that better?
Let's see.
This is what is missing. So a lot of times in some different communities, we get, oh, we need this kind of restaurant. Um, or, you know, I mean, one thing.
That's easy.
You're welcome.
You didn't know that it was good. What is missing?
What is missing, like whole scale missing.
And so, that's three, um, options. That's it.
There you go.
Can you do this call?
No.
She gave us three of those, count that up.
If you need more of any color or anything, I could do three. These, these stick together in a weird way. Hospital.
It's an easy one.
Would you get the colors mixed up?
Yellow is change, so green is like, red is missing, and improve is.
One of our commissioners is having a senior moment.
I was just, just checking, just seeing what we got here, okay.
He's trying to keep some to take that to the office tomorrow.
I'm just trying to, you know, it's like, um, sometimes it's like a grenade, it just takes a little bit to go off, and then I'm, then I'm off to the races.
Create it first.
Yeah, and then let's, I got another missing one.
Missing.
I don't think you're gonna top mine.
Uh, can I get a green one?
Yeah, I think, oh, green's in my hand.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to have two reds and a blue.
Is that legit, you need?
Notepad green ones.
I feel like we're taking drinks. Yes.
I'm good, thank you. Jason's taking, or he'll take the office tomorrow.
Which one is like improvements?
Blue.
Blue, um.
Need a big Pontiac required.
Okay, so that might be an improve?
What, yeah.
Did you just say make Pontiac road four lane?
No, no, make it like a private road, and then we're just.
Maybe.
Um, what, so, uh, what was the other one? So we have change, prove, like, miss it.
Pontiac.
Change. No, we like, prove, and then, okay, good job. I'm not, oh. No, I got me completely mixed up now, I'm just like thinking of all the wonderful things that we have in our community.
Well, there's more green. But, so, while people are filling out their last, while people are filling out their last ones, is there anything of what your brainstorm that you had that you wanna share with the group?
Thank you for doing this, it's a good exercise.
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, and if you wanna do it on your own with somebody else, we have kits, um, where you could do it. We have had several steering committee, community members who have gone and done it, and so we've had at least, I think, yeah, five conducted at this point. And the steering committee was great in volunteering, that they would go out and do that, rather than, um, having us go out and do it. But we will do this, um, I will be going to the Chambers Mix and Mingle Tuesday night out in Leonard, um, and doing this there. So, cause we said we'd go to a chamber event. I know.
In Leonard.
I'm a gun for punishment, that's, that's where it is, I really didn't, I volunteered in the night, then I Googled where it is. But my parents live in Troy, I'll have dinner with them after.
Forget.
Alright. Alright, anymore?
Good, anyone?
So, next time, we will talk.
We'll do this again.
Well, we, we won't do this exercise again, we'll be bringing a lot of public input to you, including results from this, results from the survey. We'll do the goals and objectives again, you can, we'll give you a revised draft of the intro chapter, and of the, um, commute, background chapter, probably stripped down a lot more graphic, based on your input tonight. Um, and then we're gonna ask you to start thinking about future land use strategies. Um, and what we'll do is, we'll have a simple cover memo in the front with, with the list of discussion questions. A lot of things, um, in that packet would just be for your review, and if you had comments for it, to let us know, but we're not gonna necessarily walk you through it. We wanna keep them most of the time for both objectives and future land use. Do you have any words of the wise or directions for us in the next month on the master plan?
Nope, I don't.
Can you give a quick summary of the, was it March tenth, the open house?
March tenth is the open house, and as Mr. Willzack and Mr. Nold know, um, we talked to the steering committee about what that should look like. So we would, um, have different boards there, um, and have ways for people to participate in terms of voting, but also, if we could have some sort of online part of it. One, um, one thing, and I don't have my notes with me, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Willzack and Mr. Nold to chime in when I forget something, is to have a station that explains what a master plan is and how it works, and use some examples of it. Waterstone is one, since that's the implementation of an older master plan. Um, but then also, um, looking at the recent conditional rezoning that was rejected, based on the master plan, um, that was rejected based on the future land use map at that point, and so that's two examples of how the master plan either created something, and it was implemented, um, or, and then how it prevented something from happening. So people have a good idea of what that was. Also, um, before we had shared with you that transitional, those transitional areas, there are fifty different parcels we highlighted, um, what the steering committee said is, can we break this down by what we think the decades are? Um, so in the next ten years, these are the things that we think will develop. And then ask community about those, also asking about density and how that works in different areas. Um, having a board about traffic and the road network, um, again, the more things that are coming up with, with what you were talking about. Um, and then also, um, having a board about choices for land preservation, um, and also how that works with PUDs and different options, whether you're clustering houses or not. Um, and having those laid out using examples that are in the community.
At the Legacy Center?
At the Legacy Center, on a Sunday afternoon. Um, and the idea of having it there is, there's a lot of people there who are there anyway. Um, when we advertise it, we'll always get the people who are interested and who always come to these things, but a lot of times you don't get, um, people who are going through their everyday life, and so by doing it there, um, the, it was felt that we would get a lot of people who maybe wouldn't usually come to something. it was felt that we would get a lot of people who maybe wouldn't usually come to something, that would be here on a Thursday night. So, um, Mr. Knoll or Mr. Woolzack, did I forget anything?
Are you, were you getting free pizza to the residents that show up?
I, I think that that would be a discussion for you to have, have with Supervisor Curtis. But it's not in our budget. Um, also, what we'll try and do is have the boards done for those and bring them here with us, um, to your next, um, to that meeting, that meeting, the fourth, the fourth meeting in February. Um, they may not be fully fleshed out, but we've also found it's a good idea to do kind of a dress rehearsal with any small group that we could, and we hope that you wouldn't mind being the guinea pigs.
Okay.
Not at all.
All right, thank you so much for your time tonight and efforts, I know that we were making you do a lot of work, um, but we're on a short time schedule for this, um, and if we can use these four Thursdays as work sessions, we'll definitely be able to meet that schedule.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that what you want, I don't know?
No.
Ten B?
Yeah, ten B. Um, the Economic Development Committee under unfinished business. I, I know it wasn't really active, um, last year, I think that was partly because, I mean, I know for me, I didn't really know what was needed or what was expected, and with the timeframe, um, but with, with everything going on and drawing in new business, I, I think we should keep this. Yes, sir.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I had a conversation with Supervisor Curtis on this, and the Economic Development Committee is referencing some other policies and procedures that the township has, so we need to keep it.
Yeah.
So we need to assign people to it.
Okay.
I thought we already assigned people to it last week.
No, we made it, we were discussing potentially eliminating it. After further discussions with Supervisor Curtis, it was determined that we have other policies that we had to have it, unless those policies change and that right now, there's no.
I'm interested.
That was not part of that other mission.
Did we assign members to that?
We did not.
We did not.
Do we need to do that tonight, or put that?
We can do it tonight, we should do it tonight, I'll be on it, put me on it.
Yeah, we can do that tonight, um, we obviously can't have more than three.
Right, I'll take one.
So you'll volunteer?
I'll volunteer.
Okay. Do I have a third volunteer?
Up.
I guess I can.
I was thinking I might meet during the daytime, that was the only reason I.
Let me ask, does it mostly meet during the daytime? How often does it meet?
It hasn't met in two years. It can meet anytime, whatever works best.
Okay. Um, if you need somebody, I can volunteer.
Okay.
I'm gonna need Justin Ballard to the Economic Development Committee.
I'll support.
So I have Mr. Knoll, Mr. Spiz.
You can just make the appointments, I don't think we need nominations.
Yeah, we don't.
No, we don't.
You just make the appointments.
I was making it, making sure Justin understood.
So we have Mr. Knoll, Mr. Spiz, Mr. Ballard.
Yep.
Okay.
They need the ZBA person.
And, yeah, the zoning board of appeals, um, I was last year, um, but last year I was also chairing that, and I know there's, I don't think there's actual bylaws, but honestly, I don't think it's right to chair this and chair that. So, I mean, if nobody else wants to do it, I'm willing to, but I do think there needs to be some restriction, that it cannot be a chair position on the ZBA. Unless somebody else has a burning desire to do this.
Mr., I'm not volunteering, but I'm saying, I know that the ZB, ZBA charter or guidelines were changed last year at the board level, so we might want to check that out. I think, I think it was changed to add a trustee member, it could be part of the governing body of that.
I think it was left to, where technically, yes. And if it's decided that, that I stay with it, I do think that somebody else needs to share that, and another member of the ZBA needs to share that.
Oh, yeah, recommend you resign your championship.
Yeah. So, I mean, if nobody else has a burning desire to be the liaison, I'm willing to stay on there. Okay. We have the appointments confirmed for the ordinance review and the gravel inspections.
You just need to confirm them.
I'm confirming those, so we're good. Um, one question I do have is, with all of the work going on with the safety paths, do we have, should we have some type of update or involvement with that, or get some type of update as that progresses?
Are you on that, Matt?
You know, no, I'm not, but that's a very good question, maybe that would be a question that you would ask the board on, at a, at a board meeting, whether there needs to be represented, representative from the PC on the safety path committee, and/or if not, what type of reporting can come down to our way.
Okay.
So could we ask our trustee representative on the planning commission to make that request for us?
I'll see if he's available.
Okay, thank you.
Got that one, didn't I?
Yes.
Yes, you did. Um, any new business? All right, moving on to number twelve, communication and or committee reports. Um, we obviously don't have anything from the, uh, economic development just yet.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, ordinance review committee.
We met today, we had a very, very good day, we worked on, uh, help me with this, Megan, we worked on solar, battery, and wind, uh, regulations coming from Lansing that'll have an impact on the township. We put a straw man together to, uh, for Megan to put, uh, a package for us to review in February.
February eighth.
February eighth, correct, thank you.
Okay, moving on to thirteen, um, planner and engineer reports.
We don't have any updates beyond the tattoo tonight, um, again, the item that was supposed to be before you tonight for public hearing, they didn't have a complete application, and they're working on it, and so when that returns, um, then it would be back on your agenda.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion before we move further?
A second.
Take that as a no, and this meeting is adjourned.